I think we'll go ahead and get started now. So, um, welcome to our special meeting of the governing board on Thursday, March 4th, 2021. Our first item is for Mrs. Knight to do our roll call, please.
Barb Monstam?
Here.
Jason Oliver?
Here.
Laura Brunner?
Here.
Wendy Robb?
Here.
Joel Ward?
Here.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Um, today, we're going to be reviewing the desired profile for the interim superintendent candidate. And we were, all of us were given, given some information last week, and we had homework to do. And, but we also had a chance to look over some of the responses. And I, one of the things that has, I guess, been brought to my attention through all the responses, and I think that the board is well aware of it, is that we want to be transparent in what we're doing. We want, we know that there's a lot of anxiety out there with, with our staff, with our families, with our community. And it's really our job to work on building some bridges amongst all the people and have others be part of the process also. And so tonight, we will be working with Mr. Steve Hyland, and he will be leading us with trying to go, trying to determine what our desired profile is. Steve?
Well, thank you, and good evening. Appreciate being here. Let's start with a couple rules. I don't like a lot of rules, but just a couple of rules. Rules of the road tonight is there are no, there are no inappropriate directions in terms of what you're looking for. You need to speak up. You need to represent your, your thoughts, and you need to, to have those good discussions with each other and as a group in a whole to formulate, really, the answer to our question, which is on the agenda, and I'll get to that in a moment. The other question is, and this comes from my dentist of 20 some odd years. He'd sit down in a chair, and he always the same thing. He said, "If I start to cause you pain, raise your hand slowly." So I'm going to say that tonight. If I start to cause any pain, tell me. Say, "Wait a minute, we already did that. Let's, let's move. Can we move on, or can we move faster?" Whatever the case may be. The agenda tonight, this is the backup material behind the agenda. And as your board president said, it addresses an interim superintendent profile. Discuss correlated topics for interview questions and consider providing direction. Let's start with the profile. There's a revised statute 15-503 says that a board can hire a head teacher, they can hire a superintendent, they can hire a principal, or any combination of those things. It also says that when you hire a superintendent, it's the board's responsibility to determine the requirements for that position, the profile, in other words, what are you looking for? So it says that right in statute. That statute changed oh, six or seven years ago. What the legislators said is, wait a minute, there are good folks out there that are not educators, that have got experience maybe with Fortune 500 companies, or running their own successful business, and they can certainly run a school district if the board thinks they can. Now, you can agree or disagree with it, but that's the logic behind why the statute 15503, 15503 says that you are responsible to do that. We're not going to night wordsmith everything for you, and I don't want you to wordsmith tonight. You need to look at the bigger profile. You need to look at, at the ideas and the, the thoughts behind your feelings, what that new person, interim person should bring to the table. So we're not going to wordsmith, but that's how we're going to build a profile. Then it says we're going to use that profile for interview questions. We're not going to write interview questions tonight either, but you're going to give us ideas, and there are themes for what you want to ask. And then Sandy and I'll get together next week, and we'll start formulating everything you said into specific questions. And then, as it says, and then provide direction, and that's really the direction at the end of the night. This is an item for consideration. And at the end of the night, if you're ready, the motion would be to have ASBA coordinate with district staff to establish the profile and establish the questions for the meeting. That's our, that's our goal. That's our end purpose. Profile. You have a document right now. It is a job description. And I'll, I've got one for everybody. I'll pass them out when we're ready, but I've got your job descriptions, about three different or so pages. And it lists things like, "In the area, governing board is responsible for superintendent will serve as professional advisor." Okay, those are good things to have. Everything you have on here is legitimate. But in terms of a profile, we're going to hone that down into some more specific criteria. Yes, sir?
So in other words, it's in the job description?
Well, it's more of a, it's, it's more of a, what are you looking for? What are you going to evaluate them on? This is more of a job description. We're looking for something you can evaluate them on. All right. So with that, the next question is this. We need to see if you're on the same page with something. I mentioned at the last meeting that I see this as a first step, actually, in the process of actually going to the process of hiring a superintendent. With that said, we need to know where you're at when it comes to that, because an interim can take many different forms. I use the analogy of a ship. When it comes to the district, when it comes to this coming here with an interim, are you going to put the district in a dry dock situation, kind of a wait and see, hold off? Are you going to have the district kind of stay where it's at now, in a dock, kind of ready to go, but not really going? Or you want the district going full steam ahead? Now, that's my first question for you tonight. Do you see this as a status quo person? Do you see this as a status quo activity, just to kind of get through the next year? Or do you see the district needing to move forward, continuing with the initiatives, continuing your journey 2025 at full speed? What are your thoughts? Which direction are you going to take? Is it dry dock? Is it, we're waiting kind of see, or are we going to keep moving forward?
So, I mean, because I've talked about this, like, with so many people on the board, but, um, in open meeting. I think that initially, I was thinking, you know, someone who can kind of like keep us afloat. But then I also feel like we're working on some really great things in terms of like our equity program, our social emotional learning, and we're, we've always been a very innovative district, that I would hate to see things be at a standstill. And I would like to see us continue to move forward, particularly since we have a few tasks ahead of us. Like, you know, we do have a financial situation that we're looking at, that we've talked about in open meeting, that we probably need somebody experienced to kind of help with resolving that. And then we do have, you know, this whole situation with, you know, COVID and learning loss and things like that, where we really need somebody who's going to be prepared to address those things in the next year, because that's kind of like what the mandate, I feel, is coming down nationally and statewide. So I would choose the last option, which is somebody that keep, can keep us kind of like moving forward. I don't know if that's kind of like an interpretation of, or I picked the right option in terms of like what you described.
I agree with you.
I, I think that, I, I agree with them to a certain point. I, I feel like I would like to continue moving forward, but I don't want to make a U-turn in that, or a, or diverge into a different area. I want to continue moving forward with the initiatives that we have and continuing to advance those without doing major changes in direction.
Um, so I guess if we hire the right person, they're not making decisions by themselves. There's lots of stakeholders. So it's not like it would be any kind of decisions that are, they're just pulling out of their hat and taking off with, right? So assuming that the, the candidate that we hire is someone who includes all stakeholders in all decisions, as I think we do pretty often already, then, then it's not like they're, they can't take the ship in the, in a separate direction, you know? So I would, I would lean towards definitely moving forward. We have a lot of things, you know, that we have to look at, with, you know, the marketing plan that's going to be coming out here soon because of, you know, everything that happened with COVID. And then, you know, where we're heading with the decrease in enrollment in general, because our population's getting older. There's a lot of things, and we don't want to just stand still and have a whole year on hiatus. Like, that, that's not going to work. So as long as the person is including all stakeholders and it continues to follow our vision, mission, and values, and aligns with, you know, journey 2025, I don't see how that's a problem. So.
I, unfortunately, concerned with both. It's gone full circle in my brain as to what we should do. Dry dock scares me. There's too many important things that need to be done. For example, the marketing to try to get some of these kids back that we've lost. Everything that we want to do is dependent on our budget. So we can't sit still and say, well, let's just wait for the new superintendent to make decisions. Can. I think we all agree on that. But I also worry about somebody that comes in, doesn't know our culture, doesn't know anything about the, is it 2020 now, or 2021? 2025? Oh, okay. I'm a new board member. Can you tell? So then, it's going to take a while for them to get up to speed, whereas internally, we have people already ready to go. So I just come full circle that I have trouble bringing anybody in from the outside when we have people internally that can do, get out of dry dock and make things happen until the new superintendent comes on board. I'd rather see us spend our time on figuring out the process we use to find out who the new superintendent's going to be. So I just have come to conclusion, I've come full circle on it. It's, we just need to go with our internal staff.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing collectively is dry dock's not an option. Definitely not an option. You need to stay afloat and move forward, but I hear caution in that, moving forward, that things don't occur that are out of alignment with where the district's headed. Am I correct? Okay. So when you think about the material that you're going to see in the rest of the evening, and you have the conversation about the material in which you see, keep that in mind. What I'd like you to do is take two minutes now, and on a, on a piece of paper in front of you, if you had an opportunity to ask one single question to each of the candidates you're going to see, what would that question be? If you could write that down, or at least collect it in your thoughts. We're not going to talk about that yet. We're going to save that for later. For, for the moment, what's that one thing? And it doesn't have to be perfect language, just a, a theme is even fine. What do you want to ask them about? But it's only one question. One topic. It's not an easy task, isn't it? Just to write one question. What do you want to ask them?
I will. I, like, started a question. I'm, like, texting it up. But it's the, the hard one.
Okay. Get your thought down, Laura, when you have a chance. Would you pass those down? Laura's going to pass down a document. This is an overlay of what was in the surveys. And then it's going to follow up with the Chandler 2025 document. These are just resources right now for you, as we begin our conversation. And then the next one that's going to come down is the job description that I mentioned, because it's, and again, it's just a resource for now. You don't have to internalize this. You've seen all of this before, but it's just a resource, a reminder of what we've got. Okay. Okay. Everybody have their question written? Everybody, and everything's passed out? What I did is I took the form that I gave out to you last time we were together, and I started going through both documents, both the administrator and the board survey. And I started with your core values, excellence, collaboration, equity, integrity, and efficiency. And below this, these black dots represent, in those, in the work that was turned in in those surveys, those, those dots and the language in black represents what your administrators said. These are things that equate to excellence that they said. The blue, under collaboration, this was from a board member. So you can get a picture, begin to get a picture of what they're thinking in terms of excellence, collaboration, equity. And interesting enough, if you look at equity, there are more things said about equity than the others. And one item from one board member. Terms of integrity, nothing was said. Doesn't make it bad. Doesn't mean people don't think the person needs to have integrity, but nothing was stated regarding it. And then efficiency, one item. And then I added two. These are two buzzwords in searches, transparencies, and commitment. Those both came, as you can see, from your administrators. So that's, that's a quick review of just the buzzwords. From there, what I did is I began, and we'll start with leadership, and talk a little bit about leadership. Whoops, wrong way. I'm sorry. I've lost my cursor here. There we go. I got it now. Okay.
Just a quick question. Did, I don't know if he said it, but what are the highlighted ones on the survey?
Pardon me?
The highlighted ones on the, the sheet?
Well, that's what I'm going to explain.
Say that again?
Under leadership, you can see board and administration. If you notice what's highlighted for number two there, in terms of what the board ranked as high, the administration also ranked it as high.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that is really what I learned here. When I go through this, and you look at each page, you'll notice that there's a lot of yellow. What does that tell me? That tells me the administration is in good sync with the board, and vice versa. Because you did have some things where it was a little different. Under leadership, has experience evaluating, reorganizing staff, revising procedures, and implementing policy changes to improve efficiency. They didn't put that down. They do have, though, has experience motivating staff, students, improving morale, and general enthusiasm. Okay? So when it comes to leadership, this, this is now where you come in. When it comes to leadership, and just that one ticket area, because we're going to go through all of them, what are your ideas about what you want to hear related to leadership from the people you're going to interview? This is the, this is the conversation now, with the backup information I've now given you. This is the conversation now that Sandy and I are going to use to create those questions for you. And I'll give you an example. If you just simply went with where you had a connection with the administration, you could ask a candidate, what innovative means or ideas have you employed in your, in your most recent or past positions that improved the district and the, and the mission and goals and values of the district? That would be a simple way to present that. But that's my words. We need to hear your words, what you think about leadership with what you see here.
You're asking up right now?
I'm asking you.
I think that the innovation, creativity is very important in our district. I think that's been one of the hallmark skills that our staff and our superintendent has. I would personally like to see that. But when I look at, also with the leadership, when we start going into, I feel like it's very much tied up into some of the other aspects of the survey. And I don't want to get ahead of myself, and I haven't looked at the stuff yet, but when we start talking about being able to, you know, manage and, and manage the people and, and things like that, it kind of makes a full circle with, has experience in reorganizing staff and revising procedures and policies. And to me, there's just a little subtle difference between some of the other sections that we're looking for as we, or in other sections that we've, we've chosen from and from, that we have results on, that are very, very similar to the reorganizing staff and, and making things more efficient. And so I, I do believe that our, when I look at the, the administrative response, where they feel as though they want somebody, a leader who is going to encourage and help motivate them a little bit and generate enthusiasm, I think we all want that in somebody that we look up to in a position of authority. I certainly would like my boss to be enthusiastic and motivating to me as an individual. And I certainly would, I, I certainly can appreciate every single one of our staff members wanting that same thing. It, it creates a bond between the leader and the rest of the staff. It creates camaraderie between them so that help and, which then also then flows into collaboration and teamwork and all of the other things. So it's just so interconnected to me, that it's very difficult to, I guess, identify one specific thing. But I do know I really, I think that our district continues to need a creative leader, or an innovative leader.
Well, and that's exactly the type of input that we need. You don't have to frame it any further than that as an individual. Let's hear what others have to say, though.
I would actually agree with, like, the innovative leader, and that was kind of like what was around what I wrote as like one of my questions. But I think also, when I, I think of, like, innovation, I also think of that, like, staff morale issue that comes up, because we take on some very challenging things, and we have a very, like, different community. And so sometimes, like, you know, our staff really works hard, and they maybe need somebody who can motivate them, the way that I think that Camille does with our staff. The other thing that I kind of wrote down as just kind of like a word was, I also want somebody who, because when I think of innovation, too, I think of challenge. And I want somebody who's going to maybe challenge us and, you know, maybe call us on our stuff, or maybe get people to see things in different ways. So that was kind of like my thinking in this leadership area was, you know, I want somebody who's going to challenge not only, like, staff, but even like kind of challenging our board sometimes.
The, it looks like to me, like, the difference between what the administrators want and what the board wants is the board was looking at it as wanting somebody that's more of a administrator, you know, can, can hire and fire and train and all that kind of stuff. And the, and the administration was looking for more of a cheerleader kind of figure that can, can more, you know, do more motivation than management.
Other thoughts?
I, as I go through this, I'm very impressed with the highlighted yellow. Kind of reflects what I believe in. With one exception, I'd like in the communication, number three, a known, good listener. Now, how you prove somebody's a good listener, I don't know, but I think it's important. But that'd be something I'd like somehow put in there.
Any other comments on leadership? Question for you then. I heard innovation, okay? But now, take, take your thought back to the ships. You don't want dry dock. You want to move forward, but you want to move forward with caution. How are you going to weigh a person's response related to innovation when you also want to hold back just enough that we're not taking a turn that's going to come back and not be what we want to do? You've got to be able, when it comes to interview time, and your thought process, to be able to evaluate where they're at in regards to that. You ever thought about that? How do you have innovation and at the same time alter it just a little? Or maybe a lot?
I think I was kind of thinking in terms of, like, because I think that Barb and Laura brought up some really good points. And I think I was thinking maybe more in terms of, like, what Laura was saying, sorry, Mrs. Brunner was saying, in terms of, a lot of this is being directed by the board. And so I don't think there's an expectation that they're going to take a drastic left without us, you know, directing that situation, right? But I also want somebody who does feel comfortable bringing in new ideas, especially because we're coming off of a very challenging year. And I think that is going to take some innovation in terms of, like, how we're going to get things back up and moving, and how we're going to get kids back up to speed. So that's kind of the way that I was thinking about it, in terms of, like, that need for innovation, that we're still here to kind of, like, steer the ship a little bit and consult with the superintendent before a drastic turn is made that we're uncomfortable with.
Any other comment?
I guess the problem with innovation is, this is our part-time employee. And that's, and the innovation is something you're going to see in your new superintendent. That's what you're looking for. In a short time period of time, it's very limited what they're going to be able to do from an innovation standpoint, I would think. So again, I think we forget, this is a temporary employee that may be anywhere from six months to a year. And I don't think they're going to want to take on some major program when the superintendent's going to follow them shortly thereafter. So I agree with the innovation. I think it's unrealistic that our interim will be able to do too much in that area.
So I was thinking, it's temporary, right? However, and I would be, if this was maybe 2018, I would be like, oh, yeah, we just need somebody to kind of keep us afloat. We're good, right? But we're coming off of 2020, right? But we're coming off of 2020, right? And there are mandates that are being expected of us in terms of next year, we've really got to hit the ground running in terms of making up for this learning loss and this gap that has occurred throughout 2020 and the 2021 school year. And so that's going to take somebody who has experience and who has creativity and it's, it's a, it's hard work, what this superintendent interim or not, is going to take on. And that's kind of my thought in terms of, yeah, we're going to really need somebody who's going to be able to hit the ground running.
I don't think those two things are mutually exclusive as you've been describing them because we can be-
I can't hear you.
Because we can be innovative in the short term, right? We don't, it doesn't mean that you're creating something that's 30 years long, you know? You can be innovative with, okay, this year, we're going to try something new. We're going to try this. And if it doesn't work, we reevaluate that. And we do that in education all the time in the classroom and at a systemic level, right? We're always reevaluating. So I, I don't see them necessarily as mutually exclusive.
I think that as I look at it, we have pressing problems with the district through, due to COVID and all the things that have happened. And I think we're looking at kind of more of a short-term creativity and a long-term creativity. A long-term in that, you know, moving the direction of the entire district versus short-term creativity and innovation as to how we can get the most, lack of better terminology, bang for our buck out of what the resources we have right now to allow our kids to, for us to address the learning loss that's, that's there. So I think that we have to look at the, I, I don't think they're mutually exclusive due to the fact that I think we have some short-term problems that we have to address and solve creatively that will help continue to move us forward. And those are going to probably be, I think, the most, foremost in our mind over the next year versus long-term creative ideas that will continue to move the district forward in the future that would be more appropriate for our, our permanent superintendent.
Yeah, I think I heard Mr. Worth saying that, you know, innovation is great, but sometimes you're going to have to hold it back in this situation because you don't know how long it's going to last. And I heard a couple of others of you say the same thing. So what comes to my mind is onboarding. Go back to the analogy with the ship. You're going to have a new person that you're not used to and they're not used to you boarding the ship to be the captain. And that onboarding is going to be so important to this board to have those conversations with the new person so the new person knows exactly where the limitations are. Because you're going to have to set some limitations. With, if this was a full-time superintendent, you'd have to set limitations. With an interim superintendent, you're going to have to set limitations. And because it's an interim, what I'm hearing is maybe you're going to set them a little tighter because you've got things you've got to address. You've got things that are in motion right now that have to be addressed. But maybe going beyond some of those things would be a, a bridge too far, so to speak. Okay, good, good conversation. Now, the next one is academics. That's why we're here, isn't it? We know, we like kids and we need to teach them so they can be successful in the future. Again, two items are the same. Ability to plan and implement continuous improvement and organizational improvement in all academic areas. Both the board and the administration said the same thing. What are your thoughts?
What is there to disagree with?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's self-explanatory, right? Fine.
And would you expect anything less from an interim than you would from a full-time or permanent or however you want to call it superintendent? Because that's your main focus point, isn't it? Academics and student wellness? So would you expect anything different between an interim and a superintendent in that area?
I wouldn't like to hear from Laura. I'm not a teacher, so.
I'm not sure. Yeah, like you said, I think these are just pretty, you know, standard comments. Like I, I don't think there's any issue with these. Yeah.
What then do you want to hear from this person? Person sitting here and you're talking to them in a couple of weeks, three weeks, whatever it is? What do you want to hear from them? What are they going to say that you're going to say, okay, they got the light on regarding what these two surveys said? What do you want to hear from them about academics?
I think I want to hear like how they've done it before in maybe a previous role, right? And then I also want them to evaluate our journey 2025 and tell us how they're going to implement that and what they can do for us in terms of that.
Who else?
Just another thought is how have you improved academics in the previous jobs you've had?
So, I mean, we're breaking this down into little tiny pieces. And I think that's what's making this difficult because all of this threads together, right? So we've already talked about how there may be learning loss. We really don't know that or what the extent of that is at this point, but we, I guess we'll be finding that out. And so obviously next year and even this summer, that's going to be a focus, right? And so that's definitely a focus, but it ties in with the innovation and that's going to tie in with all of these. So I don't know if this is, you know, like we're going to be saying the same things on each one of these little blocks. I'm just throwing that out there. Yeah.
Anyone else? I am touching something here I shouldn't touch apparently. After academic programs, board, superintendent, relationships. That's pretty important. And look what they, look what you have up there. It's all, it's all yellow. Absolute agreement with the administration. What are your thoughts about what you see? Well, it says child-centered. Says they're going to need to be an advocate and they needed transparency. What are your thoughts?
Well, that's what we have now. We have somebody that's a superintendent that that's, you know, everything that she does is thinking about that. So obviously everybody's like, oh yeah, that's a great idea. Let's get, let's get another person like that.
But you've got a person in front of you, you've got to ask a question, or questions to them where you can perceive this. That's a pretty difficult one to perceive. They can tell you what they've done in the past, but do they really bring it to the table? That's a tough one. So those, those are things that when you talk about some of these things, it's easy to say, here's my success in the past. That was on the leadership. Here's on academics. Here's how I've improved academics. Here's exactly what I did and here's the data that shows that this was an improvement. And I'm showing you this data over the last three to four years or five years or whatever the case may be. This one's a little tougher to focus on in terms of having data that will substantiate this. Any other thoughts about board superintendent relationships?
Is this something that would be discernible through letters of reference or through individuals speaking with colleagues of the candidates? This would be something that you would, I guess, be able to ask about as to their commitment to both of these particular things. That's, that's what I would, that's how I would try, I guess, and find that out.
And that is a good evaluation tool because these folks that you're going to meet are not right out of college. They've been around. They've taught with people, they've administrated with people, they've, they've been in top positions with, with staff. And reaching out to some of those people, maybe their current employer, maybe making a visit to their current employer. Those are things that this board can do to learn more about each of the people that you, you interview. You can, you can go that far.
So how do you make that equitable between an outside candidate and an internal candidate?
How do you make it equitable? You do this, you ask the same questions, you see some of the same people in the same positions, not the same people, but position, people in the same positions. You just have to delve into it and dig deep to find out as much as you can. Is it, is it, do you already know people in-house? Absolutely. But you can learn about people outside the house also. But now let me ask about current relationship with the superintendent. And I'm not talking the, you know, everybody feels good, okay? Not talking about that. But what are, what are some of the places that are non-negotiables? And by, I'll give you an example. If I'm your superintendent and I sit down with Mr. Worth because he's got a background in budget and finance, and I show him all kinds of information about what I, what we're projecting for the next five years, and he has that, but I don't share it with the four of you, does that work? I shared it with him because he knows the language. He knows what I'm talking about. He can really add a lot because he knew the past and I'm trying to project the future. But I'm not suggesting that's the question, but communication-wise, what do you expect out of me if I'm that person in terms of sharing information, knowledge out, what I share, when I share it? What do you want to know that's not a surprise later on? What do you want to did it to know today that I should have told you in the past? Maybe you'll learn about it today, but I should have mentioned it last week. Where are you?
I think this has been kind of discussions in terms of making sure that we're all getting the same information at the same time. However, I recognize that all of us have our strengths and all of us have our weaknesses, right? So I don't have a problem if the superintendent wants to spend a little bit more time with me going over the budget because maybe I have some more involved questions or maybe I'm just kind of, you know, learning, you know, than she would with maybe somebody like Joel who has a little bit more experience. You know, I think it's going to be based off finding a superintendent who really knows our strengths and weaknesses or is, you know, really invested in understanding that so that she can tailor, she or he, sorry, can tailor that communication when they're talking to us. Because there's a different approach that somebody's going to have with me than maybe they're going to have with Barb or, you know, with Jason, you know? So I, I think it kind of speaks to that. The other thing that I was going to ask though was with this area, could we use scenario-based questions that we create to kind of see, you know, if it hits at some of the things that we're looking for?
I'm going to jump ahead to some of my closing remarks and then we'll, we'll touch upon it then. Answer is yes. In fact, what I'm going to project to you when we finish with all these categories is that this should not be, you're there, I'm here, and you ask me 12 questions to say, have a good evening. This should not be, do you like kids? And I say, I really like kids. Yeah, they're, they're cool. And then I leave. You've got to delve into this in two ways that I'll mention that I'll bring up later in more specifics is a role play with me where I'm a community member and I pose a question in the parking lot or something to the new superintendent interim at this case. And also a predetermined activity that they have to accomplish and present to you as part of the interview. And I'll explain that in a little more depth. Short answer, yes.
Will we give these questions to the candidates ahead of time?
I think you give the candidates the questions where you want them to have a presentation. I think you keep the other questions to yourself. And I think the role play you keep yourself, and the reason why is, I can go back and I can research all kinds of things if you give me the question ahead of time. I want to see how, as a, as somebody who interviews, I want to see how they react on their feet. I want to see if they have the presence to formulate the, the answer I'm looking for and be able to say it in a convincing fashion. And I'm, if I'm too prepared for that, usually-
I guess I'm concerned that just because they're a good extemporaneous speaker, that doesn't make them a good necessary candidate.
That's true.
Goes both ways, I guess.
That's why I suggest, I'm going to suggest later that you have a mix of question and answer and also scenario, one or two. Because what do you learn from a scenario? So you give me a scenario that I have to do a PowerPoint on. And usually I start the scenario when I give it to candidates. I started with this. At a meeting of the governing board two weeks ago, they mentioned they had a concern with this. And maybe it's, maybe, you know what? Have you had conversations about Move On When Reading? You had those conversations? Move On With Reading is an initiative in a state that was established by the legislators, I can't remember how many years ago. But it basically is an initiative to ensure that when a student leaves third grade, they can read and be successful in fourth grade because reading by the end of third grade will promote success the rest of their career. It's called Move On When Reading. And that's an initiative, and I'm sure your district's doing something about it, okay? But if you were to ask, for an example, a person to take on that scenario in terms of, we're concerned that we're not doing everything we can, please bring back your thoughts related to what we're doing now, what we can do better in the future, and what you think those better things will amount to when it comes to the outcomes that we're going to see. And I've got to do my homework. And you're absolutely right. And I'm prepared to, I've done my research and I'm prepared to show you a PowerPoint and talk to you. And I, the scenario I always build on this, unless you direct me differently, is they know that they've been presented with this, they know that they're presenting at a future board meeting. And I usually say, put a podium up here, you stay up there, let them talk to you as if they're answering that question. You get to see how they project themselves. You get to see their presence. You get a real good feel for not only what they say, but how they say it. And do you believe it? And are they going to make a good base of the district because they're going to be out in front of the public? So that kind of addresses that. And we'll talk about that a little later again. Any more comments on communication and engagement?
I was just going to say that, you know, as we, as we speak about equity and we talk about how students are given the resources that they need to be successful, I guess I'm expecting our superintendent to be able to communicate to us so that we get the information and resources that we need to be successful also.
Fine point. You said superintendent. You expect your interim superintendent to do that?
Yes, and the interim superintendent also, to be able to assist us with, with helping, give us what we may need individually, not just collectively as a board, but individually to help inform us and I guess kind of meet us where we are as individuals.
Board superintendent relationships, item two under administration, child-centered advocate for learning, inspires others with his beliefs. And your answer? Share with stakeholders. They're both about communication, of course. Okay. Staff development. Has success recruiting, selecting and retaining highly qualified staff. That's not a surprise to me. I see that every time with virtually every one of these surveys that go out. And why? Because we're struggling. We're struggling for teachers. We're struggling for bringing people into the, to the system. Obvious question I see often, and it's a real simple one. If you're our superintendent, how are you going to improve this for us? How are you going to get those people here? And how are you going to retain them? How are they going to stay? And what are you going to do to ensure they stay? And do we have the resources to see they stay? Resources are not just money. Resources include creative opportunities to be a good, successful teacher. There was a budget manager I knew in the state, I won't name him, but Mr. Worth probably knows him, maybe knows the story. He was getting pushed to pay more money, pay more money. We need this, more money. And he was with the teachers. He said, okay, I got the answer. I can give you a 10% raise. He lined up 10 people that were in the audience. And it was a group, it was a teachers' meeting, probably a teacher organizational meeting. He said, why don't you all stand in line? He said, you take a step back. The person took a step back, okay. He's no longer in the district. I can divide his salary amongst all of you. That's how I can pay you more. Okay? Pretty simple, straightforward example, maybe a little over the top. It certainly got their attention, but there are other means by which you can look at retention of staff. Are they happy with their job? Are they successful? Do they have a voice? Do they get along in the culture? Is the culture promoting them as a staff member, as a professional? So that type of question, where do they go with that? A candidate will, can go a long way with that in a lot of different directions. I was a member of a committee for the city of Peoria. They were hiring a new engineer. I was a member of a committee for the city of Peoria. They were hiring a new engineer, top, the top engineer for the city, and I remember the interview so clearly, because one gentleman came up and he said, "Here's the issue. We've got a traffic problem at this intersection. How are we going to solve it?" There were about five different people I interviewed. The person that got the job said how to handle it without spending any money. I don't remember what his answer was, but he didn't spend a dime. It was just, it was staff time, so I guess you could count that. One of the people had elaborate bridges and walkways and tunnels, and it didn't matter what else he said, he was done. They weren't going to spend $5 million when somebody else had the ability to have the vision to say, "We can fix it if we just change our culture of how we address that intersection and quit applying everything from other intersections to this one, because this is a different intersection." That's the sort of thing you want to look for. And that's an opinion on my part, of course. Decision-making.
I just wanted to add...
Go ahead.
Yeah. So I know this is often like the phrase that's used in education, you know, recruit and retain highly qualified staff, but I think we really miss the boat when we use the word retain or retention. Really, we should be focused on employee engagement, because we don't want to just keep people for 40 years, right? We want them to be engaged every moment that they're working for us, whatever they're doing. And so I think maybe the question could center on how to recruit and, you know, increase employee engagement in, you know, whatever type of employees we might be focusing on in that question or whatever, but I think that's the direction we need to go, because we don't want to just hold on to people. We want them to stay and be doing a wonderful job for us.
Excellent point. Anybody else on that one?
I think that's a good comment.
Well, and if you have a staff member that feels that they have that in place so they can do those things, they're going to be a lot happier, and you will have a chance to hang on to them longer.
And Laura, I was just going to say, and that kind of comes back to the cheerleader aspect of the superintendent as to helping with morale and that engagement, and as I say, they're so interconnected, but it's fascinating to me with looking at all this, how interconnected they are.
What are the specific behaviors of the superintendent you want to see that promotes them?
Oh, my.
I think that's the question that we need to be asking them. Like, how are you going to create this culture where it's not just top-down, it's not just follow what the, you know, teacher's guide says, but like, how are you going to give your employees autonomy? How are you going to bring out the best in them? You know, what are you going to do with culture and what are you going to do with programs? Because if we narrow that down too much, that's too specific of a question.
And then I also look at, you know, it's, we have 5,000 employees here, 2,500 teachers, and we, I think the superintendent or an interim superintendent is also going to need to rely on the existing structure within our organization to facilitate having others do the same type of things, to elicit engagement from the staff and having them feel comfortable sharing, you know, and helping them be happy, because one person can't do it by themselves for 5,000 people. They have to be able to delegate that, I guess, that enthusiasm and that trust that those, the principals and other administrators at their sites can help facilitate that engagement and that desire to, you know, stay within CUSD and create a, make a career out of what they're doing here and be effective in their jobs and happy in them.
You know, the five of you are doing a marvelous job with us, by the way. We're getting so many buzzwords that we can use the engagement piece. I mean, that's, and that can transfer to any aspect of this, whether it's leadership, whether it's communication, whether it's academics, board relationships. You've, I bet at this point, I haven't been counting. I'm going to get a tape of this tomorrow, and I'm going to go through it, but I'd say you probably hit upon at least 15 to 25 buzzwords right now that are going to be, make our job easier when it comes to writing these questions for you.
And I do have one question for you. Were you going to go back to the communications and community engagement section?
Go right ahead with your question.
Are you going to go back to that one?
I wasn't going to. I thought that you'd said quite a bit, but go right ahead, please.
Just with the, that one was having, I don't think we had gone specifically over it, that it says basically having diverse experience in bringing diverse and special interest groups together and creating opportunities for strategic partnerships. I think that our district has been extremely successful in some of the partnerships that they have been involved with, and I would really like to see that those definitely continue, and if there are opportunities for expansion of those strategic partnerships with other organizations, businesses, nonprofits, whatever, that we should have somebody who is, I guess, aware of those things and is willing to invest the time that it's going to take to figure out whether those strategic partnerships are going to be good for both entities.
Thank you for that, because I caused a little pain. I went ahead too soon, so thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else on that?
I mean, I would agree with Barb on this one. I also think, too, that when I came into the district, I'm maybe the only person who was a student in the district. It's often been said that we're a conservative district, and I understand where that language is beneficial to certain aspects, but I think that we also have to recognize that we have a community that's changing as well. And so I think that we need somebody who is going to recognize that and reach out to our newer, maybe more diverse, community members and elicit some of their feedback and experiences. I often ask, if you look at, you know, other board meetings, how do we reach out to parents who don't speak English? How do we reach out to these parents over here? How do we reach out to these stakeholders over here? And I would like to see a superintendent get innovative in that and recognize that we maybe need to branch out a bit more to understand this new emerging and changing community.
Anyone else? Did we sufficiently cover staff development? Decision-making, and I just noticed an error on my part. I highlighted this one, and that is not something that's said by the administration. So here you didn't have the alignment that you've had in the past. The board said can integrate research data, decision-making. Administration said has established a strong and effective management team. I think that's probably true if you're looking at a new superintendent that is going to be long-term. I don't think an interim is likely going to have much of an effect on that at this point. What's your thoughts about, what's your thoughts about the decision-making part?
I agree with you. We have to remember we're hiring a temporary employee, not the permanent superintendent.
And this goes back to what? This goes back to, not dry dock, but it goes back to, we're going to move ahead, but there's a fence. We're not expecting this person to come in and start bringing forward massive changes related to administrative appointments. Certainly, you may have to hire an administrator along the line somewhere, but this isn't this new person's job to, unless you ask them to, to look at a wholesale opportunity to work within the system to address those types of things with administrators. Any other comment about decision-making off-topic of directly with the management team? More back to what the board said, integrating research. I think you're used to that from what I've seen. Reacts positively in high stressful situations. That's where the role play may work a little bit to help you, if we do a role play. Also looking or talking to others that have worked with this person or persons that you're looking at to possibly hire, do they handle stress? Superintendent's job is pretty stressful. Do they have the wherewithal to make it work? And then you also said includes parents, staff, community members, students, as appropriate. And do you do that now? Do you put those surveys out on the street? Are you talking to people, or is it a quieter community? And are you happy the way it is, or do you want more?
More community involvement or more?
More community involvement, more interaction. In that, in this instance, we're talking about what's the superintendent going to do to be the face of the district and get the community involved more than they are today? Is that something you're looking for out of your interim?
They're pretty involved right now.
So maybe not such a high area of concern, as long as they maintain where they're at. Building that may not be as important with other things.
I think that...
Sorry, no, you go ahead. I know you've been waiting.
I think that currently our, because we have had someone in this role for many years, that individual has really gotten to know our community very, very well, just because of the longevity and the number of people that she comes in contact with, you know, every year. It just increases exponentially. But I think that someone coming in from outside who isn't familiar even with our community may find that this is a struggle. This is something that they, it's difficult to make sense of all these different levels of input from all the different, from parents and staff and community members and students and other administrators and things like that. So I guess they would have to have a good sense of being able to weigh the input for the decisions and not necessarily, I guess, ask everybody every single question. That's going to make things completely unmanageable for a new superintendent with also trying to move things forward. So I think that there's going to be a fine line between what they can do with that inclusion of everybody else's recommendations. It can be paralyzing if you aren't able to filter that type of things, those type of things out and understand where community sentiment or staff sentiment is coming from.
I was just going to say that I think that with this and also the communications and community engagement piece, it really sounds like a systems approach, like understanding like how our community impacts like what we do here, and ultimately like how it impacts the child, which really speaks to our equity piece. So I think that that is still an important piece, but I agree with Barb that we have a community that can be, you know, you have one set of parents that's, sorry, Jason, I just threw a pen at you, but I think that, you know, captures my point. We have very contentious relationships between like ideas in our community. Like, we have one set of parents who, you know, is strongly opposed to this thing, and another set of parents who's like, "No, we're doing this thing," and it's created a lot of interesting dynamics, especially, you know, as they play out in the meeting. We've seen this with like reopening as well. And so I agree with Barb in terms of like, you know, a superintendent is going to kind of have to weigh that in terms of like, what is best for our students, what's best for our district, and how it fits with that Journey 2025, like those Journey 2025 metrics, because there's a lot of input from the community and all of it's important, but it can be overwhelming at times, and I think that we have to have a superintendent who recognizes this is what we have the capacity to do right now and prioritizing things a bit. I'd also, too, like to just honor the fact that our parents who are engaged, our parents who kind of have a certain amount of privilege to show up to board meetings, they know how to work the system, and they know how to reach the superintendent or board members, but we still have parents who don't have that access. They can't show up to meetings. When they show up to meetings, they may not, you know, speak English and may speak another language, and those are parents that we need to be reaching out to as well. And so I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, that while we have an engaged community, we have parts of our community that we need to activate more.
Later on, you're going to see, and maybe if you already looked at it, you've seen it, I saw and noted a concern in the survey for your student population going down. Now, COVID probably has an effect, but also a lack of connection has an effect on that, and maybe there's something there. And that lack of connection can lead to, you know, that cultural issue with the district, and also lead to something that could impact in terms of voting, bonds, overrides, that sort of thing. So you need to build and keep that strong.
Yeah, we have that, but on top of that, we have, you know, older neighborhoods where, you know, folks aren't having kids anymore, and so it's just a, that's a problem we were going to have no matter what, even if COVID never happened. So it's going to involve a lot of juggling around and balancing space and all that kind of stuff, and whoever's going to be the superintendent, maybe not the interim, but whoever the next one is, is going to have to deal with that.
That's true, but I do want to point out a positive of that, or one thing that can become a positive. Again, I mentioned I spent 28 years in Peoria. Prior to beginning there, Sun City was part of Peoria, up to the point where they finally were annexed out of Peoria. Did Peoria pass any overrides, bonds, or anything like that?
They lost 36 in a row.
They lost it all. And why? They had a big population. I've already been there. I paid for my kids. I'm on a fixed income. I'm not going to pay for schools. You've got to harness the energy of folks like me that don't have kids at home anymore to make sure that you're showing them what is important about the schools and how they can be actively involved. And there are ways to do that, to get them in, to highlight people. Volunteer programs is the simplest example I can use right now, but just informational, just making sure they understand they have a voice also, because, I don't know, I didn't look up to see where you were with a bond or override, but...
Our history is we got a fairly decent vote out of Sun Likes, everything considered. So Dr. Still's done a good job in building a good relationship there, which the future superintendent needs to do.
Okay.
I was also going to make one more comment that I truly appreciate when we start thinking about all of these things, that the administrative comment about has established a strong and effective management team and coordinates decision-making with other administrators. I think that's going to be a vital component to help sort out some of the conflicting views within the community and all other stakeholders, and I think that that strong management team is going to be vital to the success of our superintendent.
And I'll tell you, if you hadn't noticed, I'll tell you where it's pointed out in the survey. The administrative survey, when it comes to question 10 and it asks, "What are the challenges?", guess what? That's there. That question is there. That's a challenge, making sure that we, and I will call it flatten the hierarchy. Every organization has a hierarchy, but the more you can flatten it, the more people feel like they have a voice, and that's an important piece. Joel?
The worst superintendent we can hire, in my opinion, is somebody that will not accept you disagreeing with them, and that's a danger that I see in a lot of superintendents. They just, they don't want to hear negative disagreeing. That has to be done appropriately. There's a place for it.
Other thoughts about that? Okay. Where are we at? We're at operations now. A lot of consistencies there. Has effective management operation of a school district, supports use of technology in the classroom across the district, knows procedures, assessing and improving district operations and support areas. You've got, you're fortunate because you're a large district, because you've got trained and established people running those support areas, but superintendent still has to have at least his or her hands on it to a point where they can feel the pulse. His transportation running the way it should be, his, the food service program running the same way, all of those different areas. And then, and then it was interesting to see, and this goes back to what I was saying about the communication part in the challenges. It also says it's an advocate for change, an advocate for change. I'm not sure how they define change. I'm not sure where, why they thought that was an important... I'm not sure where, where, why they thought that was an important thing. If I was the new admin, interim or superintendent, I'd ask the question. Jason?
So our support services, operations, all that, they have a bit of turnover right now. So whoever the new interim superintendent is going to be, they're going to have to help out and, and hire people and get new people in. So whoever is putting is an advocate for change. And I mean, in my opinion, they're probably wanting to move support operations and facilities and all that into more of a customer service mindset to support administrators, to support principals and teachers and treat them like, treat them like customers, I think. What do you think?
I'll agree. I'm seeing your heads nod, pretty much all in agreement there?
But I agree with you that it's still kind of broad to where I don't know what, like what was meant there. So I would, I would want more clarification on, you know, what changes need to be made.
Superintendent only has so much time. Superintendent can only be in one place at one time, but to spread, to spread it out and not forget that there's a, you have a one or two bus barns in the district. One, showing up there in the morning at six o'clock when the, in, in January, when the bus drivers are firing up the buses, going over and seeing the mechanics and saying hi once in a while, goes a long way when you're talking to these folks to show that you care. You also have, you know, you have to also walk the, walk the talk and then just about showing up, you got to listen and you got to be an advocate also. Anything else for support? And facilities? Your facilities, from my understanding, are in pretty good shape. I did see some negative comments or I see challenges, I should say, but my understanding is I think you're in pretty good shape with facilities, aren't you?
They're pretty solid.
Yeah. If you just had more money from the state, you'd be in better shape. Okay. Budget and finance. Here's what's, again, a lot of yellow there. I was so impressed. I think that one of the things I took out, well, I know, one of the things I took out from this survey is how much yellow is on the page and Joel said it earlier. That's impressive to see that there's so much common thought between the administration and the board. You said has successful experience in planning, managing, evaluating the annual budget. You also, they also said, or you also said, can propose and implement ways to restore financial stability. Do you not have financial stability? It says restore it. I'm not hearing that you don't have it.
I think it's due to some of the COVID and declining enrollment that we've seen this year due to students just not, not being, not being here or lost students, shall we say? So, and I think that that's the first time in our history, we are looking at declining enrollment. So that's, that's a whole new set of challenges since we've been a growing district for as long as pretty much everybody can remember at this point, so.
Is the right word restore or is the right word manage? Joel?
Well, the district is very, very fortunate that the teachers' union works with us, the classified works with us. We're very transparent on our budget. So our budget's in great shape and we've set aside a contingency. The danger is you can blow through the contingency pretty quickly. So we're in a great position right now, but we've got to be careful going forward. And that's, again, will fall more on the new superintendent than the, the acting.
And unfortunately, you know, whether you're a district of 1,000 students or 40,000 students, same scenario applies. If you're a district of 1,000 students and you lose 100 students, big impact. If you're a district your size and lose, you know, 5,000 students over the course of a couple of years, that's an impact. Okay. Any other comments regarding budget and finance at this point? What's an obvious question to ask your candidate in regards to this? Joel?
In the next six months, what are you going to do to increase our enrollment?
There you go.
They got six months to a year. How can you impact it?
Anybody else want to add to that? Rudimentary question. Have you had any experience in your past positions related to budget and finance? And if so, how much money were you charged with administering? Is it the full, what's, what's your budget this year total, M and O?
350 million?
350, 360, right in there, you know? Have I, have I even come close to that? Or am I dealing with a budget of $3 million a year? It's still just as hard. Size doesn't necessarily make a difference, but you've got a big budget and a lot of different pockets, like even a small district has. You go down to a small district and, there's a lot of small districts in Cochise County, districts of 100 and less. And I've worked with a superintendent down there that's got 28 kids in the school. She still has the same budget requirements that you have. She's just dealing with a lot less zeros. She's still got to make it work. And she loses two kids. That's huge. You lose two kids, you don't see it, but you lose two kids in every grade level per school across the district. Now you got an issue. Okay, so what did I do next? I went to question nine and 10 and I looked for buzzwords. And what I found was this. In terms of the strengths, the buzzwords I found were in blue for the board and the buzzwords I see for the administration are in green. And from an outsider's perspective, I see a lot of good things. I mean, obviously student centered. That shows up in both. One, I use child center under administration. Innovation, I see programs, I see physical responsibility, I see leadership. I see strong support and that was having to do with the community and also that was having to do with the administration and staff, I saw that. I saw diversity of choice for parents. Diversity of choice for parents, that's, talks about programs generally. That talks about how you're going to educate the kids. That talks about giving parents a chance to make a decision related to their child's education. I saw a lot of, a lot of language related to things that I would consider were very positive, very positive that this district is doing. Those are the buzzwords I saw. You're closer to it than I am. How do you interpret these buzzwords?
I think a lot of, some of them are saying the same thing, just with different words, like our options for families slash, and then in the board section and diversity and choice for parents, that's basically, pretty much the same, same thing. But it also does talk to the various programs and, and what we're doing for choice, for, for families' choice. We want to be a district of choice and be able to have and continue those, those choice programs to help meet the needs of all of our families.
Continue, maintain. Job of the new interim superintendent? Let's keep, let's make sure these things are on the list next year also?
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, I don't know that there's any real question here, except I think things that you need to kind of keep in place. And I think the, the question that I had was just that, how are we going to keep these good things in place so that 12 months from tonight, we do the survey again and these same things are on the list? We haven't lost any direction. Goes back to the ship. We're still going forward. We haven't made any turns and we are progressing and these things are still important now. On the other hand, I think there are questions when it comes to challenges. And the obvious question is this, again, board is blue, administration is green. The obvious question to me is this, how do we get these into the positive areas? How do we get rid of these? As you can see, for the board, equity was, was mentioned, declining enrollment was mentioned, embracing diversity was mentioned, innovative technology was mentioned. And again, there's a perspective here because you noticed on the list of strengths, technology was there, but it's also now become a challenge. So now I want to know, if I'm the new superintendent or interim superintendent, I don't know the difference. I want to find out why it's here and it's here. Under administration, you can see declining enrollment. Well, that goes along with the financial challenges we saw. So what do you see there? You see a trend. That's a question or a means by which I think you need to spend some time on when it comes to interviewing folks. That, that is seen throughout. Equity, a little bit, technology, a little bit. Administrative position in the organization, I think that's communication. I think that's flattening the hierarchy. Maintaining a culture and vision, no surprise. You've had the same person in the same position for 25 years. You've got one of the most consistent systems in the state. There's a little bit of anxiety out there and you can read it into the language that people wrote in, in their comments here. You can read in there that there's anxiety because they know if you go to your superintendent now or the board's working with your superintendent, they know the answer they, to the, they know the answer she's going to give to the questions that are asked because she's consistent. She's done it for many years. She's got a track record. A new person coming in, you don't know them. Staff doesn't know them. That's where that onboarding will become, that I mentioned earlier, will become so important. How are you and the new person going to be on the same page and how is that going to transfer to the staff? Well, transparency and flattening the hierarchy. How do you do that? You got to ask these candidates, how are they going to do that? If that's an important question for you. How are you going to make that happen?
I think it may be a good idea, or at least I would like to see if we have a couple of people that are already Chandler people to see how they score them if we ask them to, to explain why the administration would, would put some of these things down. Like board alignment, transparency, inconsistent practices, stuff like that. I mean, what?
Absolutely.
Explain your, explain your, your, the opinions of your cohort.
Well, and I would tell you, if I was the new superintendent, out of this whole thing, the thing I would focus on most is right here. I'd want to know why. I'd want to know how, I'd want to be able to come to the board and give you an answer to why these things are on here. And I'd want to come up with an action plan to address these. So 12 months from today, they're not here. Let's get rid of as many as we can. This is, to me, as an administrator, if I were coming in, that's where I'd focus. And that's where I would ask you to let me focus because I think these are important things to challenge the system so these things are not there. So at the beginning, I asked you to do something that you wrote down, right? Asked you to write down if you had one question to ask. You've covered a lot of turf. You've been excellent at this and I really appreciate it. You've made my job really easy. So now take a look at your question and is that the same question you want to ask now? If we have, and Lindsay brought it up, if we have a scenario, or maybe it was Joel, I don't remember who brought, one of you brought it up. If we have a scenario and you've asked me at a board meeting, as I mentioned earlier, to bring back something, and I'll give you an example, a straightforward example, where are we with, again, the move on when reading? Where are we, where are we at? What are we doing? How do we compare to other districts? Are we moving forward? Are we better today than we were yesterday? Bring back a PowerPoint to that, okay? That's a way to judge a lot of things about a person. So the question I asked you to write down, my purpose in doing that, the one question would be, now that you've written that down, now that you've had a different perspective by looking at this, maybe that's changed. So let's talk about that. If we have a scenario, and you haven't told me you want one yet, but if you want a scenario that they have ahead of time, they got to do their homework, what do you think that scenario should focus on?
I think I've heard, I'm just trying to absorb like my opinion and everything that's been said. I think two big issues are concern about communication with community and other stakeholders and staff. And then I think another one that I originally had written down was give three specific ways that you would include all stakeholders in decision-making that CUSD is not already doing or doing well. Because I feel like a lot of times when we have structured interviews, sometimes the questions are purposefully very open-ended because there's a variety of folks who may not have the exact same background. But at the same time, I think that hurts us when we don't get down into the nitty gritty, not just with scenarios, but also what are your ideas? Like what do you bring into the table? What, you know, why would we benefit from having you on, on the team, leading the team? So, so I think those are two things, are two concepts, but also if we could get at least some of the questions more specific. And maybe they start off with a, a general statement and then give a specific or two after in that same question. It's just my opinion.
Mine was very similar. When I was starting and stopping, I had questions that were questions because I started a few that were very similar to what Mrs. Bruner was saying. I do like the idea of a presentation for them to present our big idea, but I also like the idea of like some surprise scenario question. And here is why. I interview people. I'm a therapist. I like to study human behavior and I want to see what makes people sweat. And I don't think necessarily that sweating is a bad thing, but I want to see like how they struggle through a question. And I want to see why they struggle through that question and what are the strengths? What are the weaknesses? So that I know what they are telling me in their body language and, you know, what is coming out of their mouth and how it aligns with our mission, vision and values. And then what are, what are the slip ups? See, because I want to see like, yeah, is this a person that really even likes children? Or is this a person who's really even invested in our community? Is this a person who wants to get to know our community? And those are things that I look for in interviews to see like, what are the strengths? What are the deficits? And can we work with the deficit or can we not? Do we walk away?
What's the topic that's on your mind that I, that you would like them to respond to?
Okay.
A specific topic. How would you word that?
I would like to see that with stakeholders, like a scenario with stakeholders. I also want to see that with equity because that's been the most controversial issue in our community. So I want to see how they're going to continue to put us on this path forward to equity, knowing that we have a community that has been contentious around this issue.
Others?
There's pretty widespread support for equity on the board and, and administration, but in the community, there's a bunch of people that are vocal about, vocal about how we get there, so.
Laura, you spoke first. Does that idea of equity fit into what you were saying? Joel? Barb? So if Sandy and I come up with a task for them to prep for, before you interview them, it would start with, like I mentioned earlier, at a previous board meeting, the board directed you to bring back the following. And we would word that in terms of bringing back most likely an action plan with outcomes and with how they were going to communicate back to the board on a regular basis. Those outcomes and the progress that they're making and what they're making and also present to the governing board initially, a task analysis of what I'm going to do. Here's my seven points that I'm going to put together to address your question.
And to make sure, one element of that is communication.
Is what?
Is communication. So it could be, you know, in the context of equity, but then also embed in, in that seven-point plan or whatever, some element of how they're going to listen and communicate.
I guess I'm going to throw something out there. Do, are we, because Journey 2020 integrates a lot of our, and Ms. Love, you had, you know, mentioned Journey 2020 previously. It incorporates a lot of our equity metrics and our equity plan, along with a lot of other things. And it does, it probably provides a And it does, it probably provides a more comprehensive type view, and I'm curious as to whether, because there are so many aspects and of the, of the Journey 2020 plan, I think it would be interesting to hear how, what parts of the Journey 2020 plan a candidate would focus on if we gave them a task about the Journey 2020 plan, to see whether they would be focusing on community, or communication, or equity, or any one of, or graduation rates, or reading, or test scores, or whatever. I think it would be, I think it would tell us something about the personality, about what, what's important. I don't know.
If I'm one of your candidates, I'm going to be doing my research, and I'm going to be looking all that information you have about 2025, before this was even said. If they're ready, they'll know it.
Well, here's the thing, I agree, but I also want to know from them where they think our deficits are in our 2025 plan. I want to know that. I want to know where they think that we can improve, and what they would add, maybe what they would take out. Like, I would want to know those things and allow that room for creativity, because if we get a person who tells us, oh, I would take out the equity piece, because I just think it's about people being nice to each other, that's how we know, like, no, that's not our value. Like, that's not what we came here to do, right? So, you know, I would want to focus on where they would add, where they would subtract, if they wanted to subtract, and what it looks like, how do they measure it?
I kind of held this back, because I kind of figured that 2025 would be a point, okay? So, in thinking about, ahead of time, when I, you know, working on this over the last couple of days, I was thinking, you know, if we do a scenario, and I'm hearing scenario, a good scenario would be having to do with equity. If we do that, and we have then a series of questions based upon what we heard tonight, and then we have a roundtable where the issue at hand is a conversation about 2025, and I advise them of that ahead of time. So they know the scenario, they got to prep for it, and they've got to bring forth a PowerPoint to you. Then you have that series of seven or eight questions, whatever the case may be. It's going to be hard on us to boil it down to that, but we can do that. And then you bring forth that roundtable, open discussion about, all right, you've read our 2025 plan, where are you with it? They may pick out what you want, they may not pick out what you want, but what are they focused on? Now, during this whole process in a roundtable, your job is to do, be a good listener, but also fire back questions. And treat this just like if this person was your superintendent, and you were starting kind of from the beginning, or evaluating what you'd done so far. It should be interactive. It should be very interactive, and so should the scenario where they prep ahead of time. I always say, pretend you're up there, and you would be, and we'd put a podium here, and they would speak to this. I saw at your board meeting a week ago, people asking questions during the meeting. That needs to occur a lot with this, because those are the delving things. The question, do you like kids? Yeah, I like kids. All right, now I want to know why. So you need to push the envelope with these questions, and push the envelope with their scenario, and push the envelope with this 2025 plan roundtable. Do you want a role play? And we're not voting right now, but just getting thought, do you want me to do a role play with this person and put him under stress? And I'm not very nice when I do that.
Yeah.
I was going to say, Lindsay, I'm sure you, you said you wanted them to sweat, so.
I don't, I don't want this to be a comfortable process. I want this to be a hard process, because I want to see who this person really is. And you learn a lot about a person when they are under pressure. So yes, I would like a, I would like that. I would like, you know, you to fire off questions, maybe even some stuff that, you know, we have seen in our community comments, you know, in past meetings. Like, I want to see that.
Have them derive the Pythagorean theorem.
Steve, I guess I'm starting to disagree a little bit. We're in the educational institution, and it seems like it's taking a second place to diversity. I believe in it totally, but again, our main topic is to educate our kids, and that's been pushed aside a little bit. So I don't want to make this interview all about that issue. To me, it's what we can do to improve our education, in my opinion.
That's why I think that, what I mentioned earlier, summarizing what you said today and coming up with the seven questions between all of that is going to be interesting. And I will tell you, in terms of the role play, what I will do, it will be child-centered. It will be about a parent that has a child-centered question, and I'm not real happy, and I'll be pushy to a point, I won't be nasty. But it will put the people under a degree of stress, and you can see how they respond. So I think we can cover the child-centered and the education part, and we can also cover the equity, and we can certainly cover the 2025, because what's that all about?
But here's what I would say, equity is child-centered, and here's why. We are a public school district, so we are charged with serving all students and making sure that all students make it to that end line. And like other big districts, and it's not just Chandler, we have some unique problems that have to do with equity, and it's not just about our children of color. It also encompasses those social-emotional needs that can be barriers in the classroom, right? It also encompasses, it's essentially like, what are we doing to tailor things to make sure that that parent choice thing is in there, right? That parents have an option for all of their students, including our sped students, and that children feel safe and accommodated to be able to learn and to be able to flourish within the classroom. And I brought up equity, because that is our most contentious issue, because our community does not understand it, and how it plays into the large scope of making sure that our students are successful, and they are prepared to go out into the community and be successful human beings.
You have a bullying policy. That fall under equity? Sure. You have a 504 policy. You know what 504 is? Accommodations. Does that fall under equity?
No.
Do you have a special ed program? That fall, you have a gifted program. Those are all issues of, you can focus on equity, and it has nothing to do with a person's background. It could, but bullying happens across the board. 504 has to be administered, special ed has to be administered, gifted programs have to be administered fairly across the board with a great deal of equity. So you're handling student needs. Education, that's a part of it. It's not, and I, I'm agreeing with you, equity doesn't necessarily mean color of your skin, racial background, where you came from, where you were born. It's the fairness of the whole picture that you're providing it. And I'm glad to hear what Jason said, that you feel the board is on that page together. I think that's a good statement.
Can I ask a question more globally? So we got information about, you know, our opinions and administrative opinions, and I was wondering where the certified and classified staff feedback was. Do we have that separately?
Would you like for me to kind of address that a little bit?
Sure.
We did ask the principals, I think just the timeframe to get everybody's opinion and collect it. I think that when we go out for the next process, which would probably start in, you know, not really in too long, we'll start to collect all the parent, all the, all the support staff, all the certified staff. So I don't know how that will look, but a certainly more comprehensive look. The one thing we did to do, Ms. Bruner, is ask our principals to speak for their community, for their parents, for their staff members. So put on that hat, wasn't specifically, but put on that hat to speak, because we were limited in our time to gather this information.
I would make a suggestion. If you liked the process that we went through here, why not next, because this is your first step. I don't think anybody's disagreed with me yet on this one. This is your first step to a new superintendent. So why not put out an independent survey with community? Why not put out an independent survey with support staff? Why not put out an independent survey with professional staff?
For the interim?
And then do a same type of comparison that we did here.
But you want us to do that for an interim selection?
Pardon me?
You want us to, to survey all those groups for the interim position? Or are you talking about the long?
I'm talking long-term. I'm agreeing with Sandy. Our timeline for this was pretty compact.
Exactly.
But as you move forward, and that's why I mentioned this as a first step, as you move forward with the total community, send this same survey out to those other groups. Support staff, professional staff, parents, and here's another one, students. Students will tell you what's going on. They know what's happening to them. Ask them if there's equity in the system. So put that out to everybody, but for, but separate ones, so we gather separate information so we know where it came from. So I think that's an extremely important thing to do. That's planning ahead, that's a step down the road when you're starting to look for a new superintendent. I would, I would suggest that you, strongly suggest that you have that out there for What else do you have to tell me tonight? That's a lot.
I was curious what everyone else's questions were.
Yeah, can we do those? Don't you want us to do that, the questions?
Yeah. What would you write down?
Well, mine, I've already stated, what steps would you take to increase our enrollment?
Mine is kind of a one-to-make somebody sweat, and that was...
One, you only get one.
Yes, that's, that's correct. And it was basically, in their opinion, who is the most important group of people within a school district?
Mine was very similar to Ms. Bruner's, like, a few, but it was like, how would you integrate, like, admin, community, stakeholders, board, teachers, to sure that we're meeting those 2025 metrics? And it was also kind of around, like, how would you challenge us on our, like, core mission, vision, and values for 2025?
No, mine, if I gave this to somebody, they could probably talk for half an hour without stopping. I just said, how do we better educate the most, most kids in our district?
I shared mine. Give three specific ways that you would include all stakeholders in decision-making that CUSD is not already doing or not doing well.
Is there any one of the five of you that does not want their question answered? You all want your question answered, right? I think we're going to need to build this into a two-hour interview. Because here's where you can get it answered. Your 2025 plan, and the build-down you have of that encompasses everything you've said in one way, shape, fashion, another. And during that roundtable, you bring your question just like that, if whether it changes a little between tonight and then, you bring that to the table, and you ask it. Once they brief you on what their thought is with 2025, then your job is to drill it down further, and that was the purpose of me asking initially, and then again, and all through this, kind of focusing on what you were thinking. And that is bring that, because I kind of think you, I kind of thought you might go for the roundtable, because it opens it up in a number of ways for you. So that's how all five of you get your answer. I don't have any more, unless you do, except for one thing, and that is, did I do what you needed me to do tonight? And be critical if I didn't. I learn and grow from these things, too. What else should I have done for you tonight?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I didn't hear from Laura.
I have no feedback at this time.
I really appreciate this. This is an action item. If I may, Madam President, I would suggest, if you're happy with where we're at, someone would need to motion that we direct ASBA to work with district staff, Sandy in particular, to provide a scenario, a, that they will, candidates will have to work on. A roundtable is what I heard, a confrontational type of role play, and then a few questions thrown in also that kind of canvass everything we talked about. You're looking at probably, probably close to two-hour session, but you need to know who these folks are. And if they get done a little quicker, so be it, but let us worry about getting the schedule back to you that maybe looks right once we get the questions. If that is sufficient, we would need a motion to cover that by any governing board member that wishes to put that out, and then, of course, a second and a vote.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you very much for this session this evening. I'm very happy that we were able to go through this and distill down the types of things that we're looking for, and we appreciate your guidance through the process. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will ask, is there a motion for our action item on, on directing ASBA to formulate the questions?
Madam President, I move that we direct ASBA with Sandy Cooper and district admin to formulate the questions for the interim superintendent interview, based upon the board's input this evening.
Very well stated. Second.
Is there any discussion on this? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. That is all that we have for this evening, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.